Everyone, I'd like to call the December 7th, 2021 City Council Meeting where the City of Cannon Falls is ordered. December 7th, 80 years ago, Pearl Harbor. How an event changed the world. Keep it in your mind. Okay, roll call, please.
Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell, absent.
Montgomery.
Here.
And Althoff.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda. I have an addition to the agenda. We will add Steve Daboll from the Historical Society, and we'll put him under public hearing before we get into the talk on the budget. Is there anybody else with corrections or additions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition.
So moved.
Motion by Bringle, second by Gesmi, to approve the agenda with the one addition. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Public input, I see there's nobody on the list for public inputs, so we'll bypass that tonight. And we'll get right into public hearing. Actually, we're going to call Steve Daboll up from the Historical Society. He's got a message for us tonight.
I've got more than a message, Steve Daboll. I have a check. And, yeah, and it's been a little while, but the second wave of COVID just keeps messing with our program on what we can do and can't do. Although, right now, we've got a couple of volunteers that are back that are going through our donations and evaluating what we have and what should be saved, how it should be saved, how it should be categorized. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that needs to be done. But Zach and I got back at it a little bit. I have a check here for $10,000. That's what we do when we get to $10,000. We bring it in. $5,000, this was generously donated by the local fire department, so I'm really excited about what they did. $2,000 is the third of three payments from Merchants Bank. They donated $6,000, but spread it over three years. And the others were some personal donations unsolicited that just came in the mail. I'd like to mention some of them, but I don't because then I'll forget some, and then some will get mentioned and some don't, and then I get a phone call. But Neil, here's a check.
And I thank you guys. I'll get to the speaker.
I think, thank you for your patience. We're still working at it. Neil, I wanted to bring a total report down for you tonight, but just didn't get a chance to put it together, but we'll do something like that. We've had some commitments that have backed off and some new ones that are opening up, so we're still working at it, guys. We'll get there. $186,000 or bust. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just a little background. The reason Steve's bringing us the money is we bought that house next to the museum up there for, you know, they were crowded in the museum, and now they got office space next door and all that, and that's the reason for this.
Can I talk some more, Mary Jo?
We haven't done any renovations on that building yet because we feel we need to pay you guys off first. We shouldn't be spending money on it, so it is not ADA-qualified yet, although it has already been put to great use because the administrative areas that we were using in the current building have now been moved over. Zach offices out of there. And a lot of the work that's getting spread out, that used to have to be put away every time you spread it out, you work, you spread it out for 20 minutes, you work on it for an hour, and it takes you 20 minutes to put it away. Well, now we've got rooms over there where stuff is being spread out, so we're sort of using it. And the garage is full of stuff that we had placed around the town. John, do you know anything about the bobsleds in town, you know?
I've been doing, trying to find out where they disappeared to, and I just...
Well, no, one of them is now, we got it back. It was the one that was Johnny Hiram had up in Eden Prairie, and it's now in that garage. And I did forget to mention that Luke is going to be in town from December 20th to January 20th, and I'm going to try to get about six or seven interviews done for our stories, at least get them in the can, so that he can edit them. Right, Luke, or are you back there?
He's not back there.
He isn't there today?
No.
Sam might be back there. Well, Luke is going to be in town, and I'm going to take advantage of his proximity. And one of them is going to be the bobsled. And I'm finding all types of, there were two of them, maybe three of them, where they were dug out, who used them. Jim Soul Sr. insists that he holds the record, and I think he started at Doc Williams' house at the top of Mill Street and ended up at the Banshell. But I remember my dad telling me that they used to station people on Highway 20, which is Main Street or Fourth Street, so they could zip on by down to the river.
Came down to Spring Garden Hill, and we posted people at the intersection, went all the way to the river.
Yep, so you do know about it.
Oh, yeah, I was on them.
You were on them. Ah ha! I'm calling you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, now we'll open, we got the 2022 final budget and levy public hearing. So we'll open that hearing. First, we'll get a little input from Neil.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, we have to approve a final budget. Tonight is the public hearing, and at our next meeting, we will adopt the final budget and levy. In your package, you got a, just a short bullet point, highlighted items that we talked about actually in the preliminary, because the final is not changing from the preliminary, but one item. And so I'll just go over the highlights, and if you have any questions, we'll answer them as we go. So based on the negotiations for the union contracts and non-union, we're going to be doing 1% salary adjustments in July and in December for a 2% final. One of the things that was really encouraging is, I don't know when the last time you heard health insurance go down, but we did change companies this year, and it reduced our premiums 10.6%, and that equals to about $41,000 for the year. So that was a nice savings. One of the things that, when I first got here, is you started a bituminous milling overlay program. It started at $130,000, and as we go along, $130,000 isn't $130,000 anymore. So we did increase that again this year. Now it's up to 175. As we work along, I'd like to get that up to 200,000 before we reevaluate and see how much that gets us. It may, depending on the price of oil and labor, it might be the same as 150,000 in five years. So we'll have to keep an eye on that for our maintenance. The council did decide to close the DMV this year. There was a $40,000 levy tied to that. Just an FYI, I did send out an email yesterday hoping to get a response back on the process, and I haven't done that yet, or haven't gotten one back yet. So I'll keep in touch with the state and see where they're at with that. So that was a $40,000 savings, and I did bring that to the Finance Committee, and they decided to put that money into municipal reserve, because in 2023, we're going to hold or do another milling overlay or a street reconstruction, and we're going to need some money to take care of that. So it'd be my recommendation to continue with that 40,000 going into a fund to help pay for that. I know when we get down to the sewer and water, there'll be some extra savings there that we can use towards that also. So that is about the highlights. The final levy for this year will be $3,195,334. Our local government aid did go up a little over $4,000 to $704,781. Other increases in revenue, there's a standard 3% increase in our tax, in lieu of taxes for energy. We, during COVID, we reduced our liquor license fees, so they went back up to standard, so there was a little increase there. And there was a small increase in police aid. Water and sewer rates, again, you decided to hold them. I think for the simple fact that we had a $365,000 bond that was paid off in the water fund. So that's, when I talked about them, street reconstruction projects, there's where you'll be talking about, also talking about a water tower project tonight, and that's where some of your money is going to come from. And then also, you had, in your sewer fund, you had about a million dollars worth of bond payments. We are, next, in 2022, you drop some off this year, and in 2022, that'll be your last payment for the PFA loan for the wastewater plant. And that was, I believe, around 500,000. So that's, that is a good thing. But as I talked with the Public Works Commission, now is the time to start doing some fixing because we've been holding back. I know I talked last year at the budget hearing how we end up going in the red, in the sewer, about in August, and then don't crawl out of the red and get into the black till towards the end of the year. And now we're going to be able to fix some stuff. I know you've, some emergency stuff we have to fix, but there is other items out there that we're going to have to start working on. And plant's 20 years old, that's a harsh environment out there, and anytime you have expenses in a wastewater plant, it goes by tens of thousands, not 1,000. So that's just the way it is. So anyhow, no increase in fees for 2022 in the water and the sewer, and the last bond payment for the sewer is in 2022 for the PFA loan. There's also a last payment for the library bond. It will be done in 2022. That's $78,000. That's been going on for a while. The rest of the bonds, I won't even go through because they, they're out their ways yet. We won't worry about them. They're just going along fine. There was a reduction in the fire department operations. You'll see that on your levy summary of 18%. That was just a shift in finance. We moved the capital money into the capital equipment fund, so in reality, it's still the same, it's just that it moved into a different fund, so we can pay out of. Other than that, the final levy for 2022 is $3,195,334, which is a decrease from last year of 0.2%.
I know this will be the third year now we've held water and sewer rates without an increase, because that's what people call me about, you know, they don't like to pay more money on that, but we'll see what happens next year. But this will be the third year that we haven't increased that, so that's a good thing.
One of the things I was going to mention also is, this decrease is nice, but we all know what inflation is doing right now.
Right.
And I don't think we're even going to get close to getting by with that next for 2023.
Right.
So enjoy it.
Enjoy it while we can.
You know, gas prices are, what, 40, 60% higher, and, you know, it's coming, so.
Yeah.
And the other thing I'd like to mention is, because this comes up every year, even though we're holding our levy basically steady, people are still going to probably see property tax increase because a lot of people don't understand it's kind of a three-legged monster. We only control a certain part of that. You've got school, you know, state, et cetera, and valuation on your home.
Yeah.
I know my valuation's going up, so I know I'm getting a tax increase next year regardless, so just want to make people aware of that because that question comes up quite a bit.
And if anybody does have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them if they wanted to just give me a call.
Sure. Good.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Anybody from the public, questions? If not, we'll close the public hearing and maybe make a motion to pass this on to the next meeting, or just a public hearing, okay?
It's just a public hearing.
And we'll close the public hearing. Okay, consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December 3rd, 2021. Item B, the minute meetings for the November 16th, 2021 City Council Meeting. Item C, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 381 and summary of publication and ordinance of the City of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, amending the city code, Chapter 152, relating to the conditional uses in the B2 Highway Business District. Item D, approve the replacement of aluminum channel gates. Item E, Resolution 2596, accepting the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act. And item F, approve the appointment of Diane Johnson to the Planning Commission. Is there anything, anything on there you'd like to pull down? Anything? If not, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Duncan, a second by Montgomery, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, we'll get into council business. Item A, Resolution 2595, receiving the preliminary report and calling for public hearing on the Bluff Drive improvements. Bill, you want to take that? Or Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Commission did review the memo that you have in your packet. They are recommending that the city council approve the resolution, which would set a public hearing, basically to initiate the project at your January 18th council meeting. The other item that they recommended, and I'll go a little bit more into detail here in a minute, but they're also recommending that the assessments are calculated on the per each basis, so basically, everybody would be assessed the same. So with that, then, what we're looking at here is, just for a little bit of history background, you know, Bluff Street, I'm sorry, Bluff Drive was not completed, meaning the final course of asphalt and the other items related to, you know, normally, project closeout, items that we call a punch list, meaning that Dan and myself or our staff would make sure all the valves, the hydrants, the curbs haven't settled, the pavement's in good condition. That was never completed. So we did complete that, we call punch list walkthrough earlier in November. We did develop a list of items that needed to be either finished or fixed, fixed items such as settled curve, curb and gutter, et cetera. So that list of items has been prepared. The total of the cost, and also with some contingency and engineering, is $105,000. There are 15 properties that would have but this, so approximately, that would be $7,000, a lot assessments would be. Per your policy, then, that would be assessed 100%. We have a little discussion, why 100%? That is because these are, in essence, what I call first-time improvements. So when you buy a house or a lot, you pay for the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, the pavement, et cetera. After it's put in for the first time, then, you know, maintenance, things like that, well, that's taken out of your, either your sewer water, you know, accounts for, you know, valves, hydrants, manholes, or out of the general tax levy. Let's see, I'm trying to think, those are really the highlights, you know, of this. It's fairly straightforward. The statutory process we have to follow is fairly prescriptive, so we have some real set steps. So tonight, we'll be asking you to set that hearing. So at that first hearing, then, staff, we would give a presentation, basically to you and to the public. People would be able to give their opinion to you, should you proceed or not. I like to call that the thumbs up or thumbs down, should we move forward with the project. The council would then decide to move forward or not. You would call that ordering the improvement. That does take a supermajority of the council to move forward. At that point, then, we'd start preparing plans and specifications, and we'd basically be doing the necessary items to go out to bid. I always remind the public, I always remind the council, that these are estimates. Until we have a bid in hand, we're estimating how much this is going to cost. So, and as Neil mentioned earlier, inflation, and we are, we're just a little, we're more uncertain than we normally would for bids coming in. But then after you receive bids, then we will have an actual amount. So instead of 7,000, it'll be, you know, $7,121 or whatever that amount would be. And then you'll have another public hearing, where then residents would have the opportunity to object to their assessed amount. Basically, what the city, you know, statute says is that the value of their property has to be worth that much more after the project than before, so they would be able to present evidence to you. You would be the, you're the body that would hear that, and then you make that decision. Someone didn't like that decision, they do have the opportunity to appeal at the district court. But in a nutshell, that's the process. What we're looking at, then, is, in essence, that would wrap up in the June timeframe. That would still give us time to get this completed this summer. Ultimately, you know, we're targeting a fall of 2022 completion date. So with that, I will pause, and if there's any questions, or Neil or Dan, any other thing to add?
Not all the lots up there have been built on yet or sold. Would that $7,000 then be put on the asking price for the land for a new buyer?
So it would, it would, it would go against the property, and that would be up for that property owner to make that decision, how they handle that.
And also, that those properties up there were bought when the previous company that was going to build there kind of went belly up. Those lots went for between 6,000 to 7,500, generally speaking. So even with the proposed assessments...
The developers should be able to make money.
They're getting a pretty darn good deal.
Yeah, you're correct.
You asked if all the lots were sold.
No, they're not.
They all are, I think.
They are all sold to develop, to builders, or to owners, no.
Any other questions? If not, I take a motion to pass Resolution 2595 for a preliminary report and calling for public hearing on the Bluff Drive improvements.
Second.
Motion by Gesmi, a second by Bringle, to approve a Resolution 2595. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, item B is the Water Tower Painting Professional Service Agreement. Neil, you want to take that?
Sure. As you know, the water tower has been talked about probably for the last 10 years or so. We did get a chance here this summer to get up there and with WHKS and some of their younger folks to crawl the tower and get some, get some pictures, and it wasn't Bill, and it wasn't Neil. And so they've got a, they did their investigation and come back with some of their findings. I'll let Bill take care of that. I just got a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. This is a professional services agreement that to hire WHKS to do the project and engineering. But we, a while back, we talked about the ring on the water tower and adding a larger ring and to help broadband out into the townships and in the school district. And how that works is, right now, the ring that we have up there is full of antennas, and it's at 105% structural capacity, which means it's full. So we can't put on another broadband company that can go out there, Verizon's on there and Northfield Wi-Fi, the county and their emergency stuff, and so it's full. And so we had conversations, and when the rescue money came around, that the Goodyear County would maybe be able to help us out with that. So they did put some money in, into broadband, and we're going to be applying for a broadband grant. Laura's working on it as we speak. We got some information from Bill on costs, and we're going to expand that to a 20-foot radius. That will, that will give us plenty of room to add on more broadband people to help out, like I said, the school district and the people out in the township that cannot get service. We got a couple letters of support on this grant that we're going to be applying for. One of them actually came from, it's a Goodyear County grant, but it came from Goodyear County Park Board. They're putting the pavilion out there and some bathrooms out in Lake Billsby, and they want to be able to turn lights on and off and lock and unlock doors. Well, they don't have service out there. So by putting on a larger ring, we can get a broadband service provider out there and we, internet provider, and they can get service. So it's kind of nice. And then also, we got a letter of support from the school district, which they were definitely all in, saying, boy, this will help out. So them are the two items. If we don't get the grant, we may have to come back and talk it over. It's $85,000 to put this ring on with the engineering, the painting, and the contingencies. Granted, we don't know what inflation has done, so give or take, but that's what we're going to apply for and see if we can get a grant from the county to expand that ring. And if not, we'll have to come back and decide what to do. It really is for the folks out in the county and the townships and the school districts, so I would hope that they would look at this favorably. So otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Bill. He can explain the project and what we're going to do.
Yeah, actually, Neil, you kind of summed it pretty well. I have a whole lot more to add. But in essence, what will be done is, we'll be doing a full sandblast of the interior tanks, basically removing all the coatings down to what we call near-white metal, repainting it. The exterior there will be, what we call a sweep blast, and then repainting it. You know, we did talk about, okay, what are some things? We had some ideas, what can we do to save some money, some costs? And probably the biggest thing that we discussed was, you know, the sandblasting itself, do we basically, you know, build a curtain around the tank, or do we instead put drop covers on the ground and collect the sand that way? It's about $150,000 cost difference, and based on the fact that there's no homes, we'll, you know, in the nearby area, we'll put some things in there regarding, you know, cleanup and winds and what kind of paint we use. We are going to take the approach of what saved the $150,000. So there's other, some other miscellaneous items, as Neil mentioned, the railing... the railing, other things such as, you know, gaskets and lighting and things like that. We'll also, you know, there's some just things that are just old that'll get replaced as well. Timeframe is, we're looking to get this out to bid in the springtime. Basically, you know, painting is just like you think. It's got to be done in warmer weather, so really a summer-type project is the goal. Budget-wise, you know, I'm again concerned about bidding, so we did reach out to some contractors to talk about pricing. We, we had dollars, so usually the contractors tell you what it is on a square foot basis. So, so they're saying fifteen to eighteen dollars per square foot, which is still, three dollars is quite a bit. That's still, you know, twenty percent, you know, leeway. So kind of just like the assessment project, we won't know the numbers till we get them, but basically all told with, you know, the railing Neil mentioned, the blasting, the structural repairs, some of these miscellaneous items, and engineering side of this, we're rec, I'm sorry, the anticipated cost is, ranges between seven hundred and five and eight hundred and twenty-two thousand. So that's the number as we, as we go into bidding that we've been discussing with Neil and Dan. So with that, then, what we're looking for is approval of the engineering agreement, and we'll start work on preparing the bid documents.
Quick question for you. So this is about, is this a fifteen to twenty-year project? So this is going to be just every fifteen to twenty years, same process?
Exactly, yes. Yep.
Okay. Is there, are we in any trouble because we waited a little bit longer on this one, or is twenty years realistic? I mean, Mother Nature, the conditions and everything that it's in, when you assess it, is it structurally, everything's good?
Yeah, on, on the interior, you generally, what we call the interior, the wet portion where the water is, you generally wait until you need to redo the whole thing. The exterior, you maybe could have done a project in between on the exterior. The cha, one of the challenges, you only have one, you know, one tank, so you have to drain the tank to do that. So that's a fairly big undertaking. So whoever made that previous decision, I can understand that, and it makes sense. But otherwise, yeah, fifteen to twenty years is, is pretty common.
Any other questions?
What are, what are the, are we going to have any trouble once we drain it as far as service to the city, as far as water pressures? Dan?
We, we talked a little bit about that. So in essence, you know, you have a booster station. So in essence, what happens is that booster station runs continuously, and you do, you know, waste some water during that time, because you really need to keep pumps pumping all the time. And if you don't have enough demand to keep up with it, then, then that water in essence blows off and goes into the storm sewer. So, but it should, I shouldn't say should, it will work reasonably well. But, you know, but, but you will, you will spend some, or waste some extra water.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, the, the fire protection and stuff, the pressures.
Fire protection should not change. Now, if you have an extended fire, meaning like an all-day type fire, like a natural disaster type fire, you would have, you would have less capacity to fight that. But you do have enough capacity with your booster station to fight what I would call a, your, I don't think there's anything called an average fire, but a normal, a normal event.
Thanks.
Anything else? Hearing none, I would take a motion to proceed with a water tower painting professional service agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Montgomery, second by Duncan, to proceed with the professional service agreement for the water tower. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, item C is the River Road sanitary sewer extension. Dan, you want that one?
I can, once again, I can start this out, because Bill's going to have to finish this one too. So, just a little history. The need for this feasibility report came about because of a property owner at 1014 River Road, unable to sell the property because the septic's not compliant. So we reached out to WHKS to come up with some ideas so that they could reasonably connect to city services. So the idea is to create a demarcation point for the three properties on River Road by installing a, a manhole. And they would be responsible for the installation of their service lines to that demarcation point going forward. So with that, I'll give it to Bill. He can explain it more.
Once again, I don't have a lot to add, but no. So it was, as Dan mentioned, that was the, really the discussion of the Public Works Commission. I thought, and we had the resident was there as well, and I thought we had a fairly good discussion. And going back to 2016, you actually had plans and specifications. We're prepared for a project. And, and so we reestimated that project, and it would be about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, of which you would divide between three properties, and really probably two and a half, because one of the properties is just physically closer. And obviously, an assessment, you know, two hundred and eighty thousand divided by D, or even four, or whatever number is, is just, is really too high. It's not practical. So as Dan mentioned, we looked at some different items, and really, we were kind of coming up with the same problem. And really, as Dan mentioned, that demarcation line, you know, the sanitary sewer shown in one of your figures here, the green line, but in St. Clair Street, you know, really the, the sanitary sewer was never brought to the, you know, south right-of-way line. So we thought, well, if the city could handle that portion of this, really find the sewer, because we don't know exactly where it is, because from old plans, and bring that closer to the property, bring it to the property line, that would save about fifty thousand dollars off the project. Also then, we would basically leave the water. You know, the other project included extending water main or service, so these people would actually stay in their well. In, in essence, it would be what, we're punting that down the road. The really, the immediate concern is the sewer. The, the property owner did express some, some, you know, or had some concerns that their water quality isn't real good. But I think anything you do from a municipal water perspective, you know, could be done, you know, cheaper. Others, you know, it's not as reliable, things like that, but, you know, from with water filters or softeners, there could be things that could be done on the water supply, because really it was a taste and odor and, and sand issue. So really, what we're solving today or potentially moving forward with is the sewer only. But they would then be required to install a grinder pump system, basically a private system that they would pump to this newly extended, you know, manhole line that was shown on their exhibit. So, so really, in essence, then, the public portion of this project becomes real small. Really, it's that fifty thousand dollars would be a public project. The rest of it would be a private expense. So now, the two property owners, the two sellerly ones, ideally, they would work together. They may, they may choose not to, or they may not be able to work together, but they would each have that opportunity, or they will just be installing their own pipe and grinder pump each. I think that's probably the highlights without, but there's something more. We can, obviously, we had a, we had a longer discussion of the Public Works Commission, so we can, we can go into some more details if the council's interested.
Just for public information, we're talking about the three houses that are directly north of City Hall here, along River Road up to, what is it, St. Clair Street, it comes across by Ag Partners there, but that's what we're talking about.
This has been talked about for a long time. It's time to get it done.
So, so in essence, what we're asking, if the council concurs with the concept that we would move forward with a smaller project to extend the sewer, approximately fifty thousand dollars, and then the property owners would then be on their own to install, you know, hire their own contractor, install their own, in essence, private, you know, sewer pumping system to reach that point.
Yeah.
And what property owner have you talked to? You, you've talked to one or three?
We've only talked to...
It was Katie Stock.
Katie. Katie Wagner.
Katie Wagner, Katie Stock Wagner.
What's nice about this is they don't have to hook up, but they will have the ability to hook up. Sooner or later, they're going to sell their homes. And if they're on a individual septic system, they cannot sell their home. So they're going to be doing the county road, St. Clair, next year. They're going to put a mill and overlay on it. And so we feel that we should get that street dug up, get that pipe out, and get that manhole out of the way, so they have the ability to hook it up. They don't have to, but someday, they're going to sell their home.
They're going to want to.
And, and then they will be hooking up to city sanitary sewer. The one person that was here wants to sell her home, so she's been looking at that for quite a while. And the other two, we don't know, but it doesn't really matter. But they will have the ability, after we put this manhole in, to hook up. And someday, they will sell their house, and they'll have to.
And then it'll be up to them.
And then it'll be, it'll be ready to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, wasn't it mentioned that the cost to the individual homeowner would be pretty close to what it would be to put in a septic system anyhow?
Yeah, we, we were estimating it'd be about fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars, depending upon if they worked together on, if they installed a pipe together or separately. But you're right, a, a mound system's going to be in that same price range.
Correct. And, and the county will not allow it to be replaced now, because the septic and the water, they're too close together, so you can't do that anymore.
Right.
Any other questions?
But this also means we don't have to dig up the street twice, which is big.
We want to get done and out of there before they start their project, the county.
Right.
And if you remember, I think at the last meeting, we approved all them resolutions to do all the county roads in town. There's going to be a lot of work going on in Falls.
Yeah, what's another one, right? What's another project?
Any other questions? If not, I take a motion to approve the feasibility study as provided by Bill and present the option to the property owners.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Motion by Bringle, second by Duncan, to approve that motion, to accept the feasibility study by Bill and WHKS, and present the option to the property owners. Any other discussion?
I think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, reports. Kyle?
Good evening, council and community. I want to start out first off for thanking everyone who came to Deck the Falls, the Small Business Saturday, the sleigh rides, Santa's visit, the parade, the lighting of the tree, and especially the fireworks. The crowd was impressive, to say the least. And so I'm hoping to continue that next year. We'll just need a few more volunteers and a little more money, maybe. But it was a great event. And I want to thank all the volunteers who did help us with that, and the people who came and were in the parade. That's a big help as well. And so we're on to light up Cannon Falls, and I passed around a sheet to the city council members and employees. We have three activities going on in the month of December. Light up Cannon Falls decorating. If you are a business or homeowner, you can let the chamber know your address, and we will be creating a Light Up Cannon Falls tour map that will have the residents or businesses' locations. And also, those same locations will be put into a drawing, and we have over seven hundred dollars in prizes. And so a simple phone call or an email will get your name in that drawing. Okay? Buy a local giving tree. This is the Chamber's project of helping families in the Cannon Falls area with children who they need help getting them their Christmas presents. We have ten children on the list right now, and I mean, it goes everything from diapers and wipes, right on up to toys, clothing, bomber sweatshirts, everything in between. And so we still have six that need to be purchased. So if you'd like to purchase a gift and have it in by December seventeenth, that would be wonderful. Just stop by the Chamber. Holiday scavenger hunt. That has begun. And we have had, we've got four clues out there right now, and Facebook, Instagram, and the webpage are just lighting up. We have contacted, or have reached out to thirteen hundred people, and that is, that, that's awesome. That is just awesome. And if I have time, I'd like to read the four clues, so that you can get an idea of what we do for clues. Clue number one, Rudolph is supposed to have, is supposed to have a red nose, but this reindeer is all white. He should be hiding in the snow, but we don't have any. Should be, didn't have any. Okay? Santa isn't far away. So that's clue number one. Clue number two, we have all heard of Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, but where is Mooie Christmas in Cannon Falls? Mooie Christmas. Okay? Now, all of these items are visible from walking by or driving by. So you don't have to get into any places, you don't have to, they're, they're very visible to everyone. Okay? The sparkling snowflakes are lining the streets of downtown Cannon Falls. There is one more that isn't in line. It's very visible to everyone.
Is that the one Dan put up?
Where is it? All right. Clue number four, and this one just got out this afternoon, late this afternoon. Cannon Falls has a lot of city parks. Where is the one location that has a list of all the city parks? There you go. Any questions? The scavenger hunt, there is a location sheet. You can get it online or by stopping at the Chamber office. And we do have a one hundred, a seventy-five, and a fifty-dollar prize. And so all the filled-out and completed forms of locations will be used for that drawing. So more fun. Any questions? I'm looking forward to the new year. We don't have events planned right now for January, February, so it's a little bit of a breather. Thank you very much.
Just say at the Deck the Falls, that was a good crowd down there, but the drawing and the fireworks are fantastic.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And, you know, those fireworks guys do just a wonderful job. And with them being in their off-season, I think they kind of clean the warehouse out.
I think so.
Which is beneficial to us.
Yes, it is.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Joint Powers Trail Board. Laura, you anything? Mary Jill?
Not a whole lot. They're still, they're trying to get the pit toilets installed. They still haven't come. And then they're working on the electronic pay stations. That's kind of pretty much it, winding down into the winter, so.
Okay, EDA. Laura's not here. Matt, you want to go? That was quite a meeting we had.
Yeah, it, it was. I was looking through the agenda. We got the final plans have been received for the Keller-Bartman. That should make it to the Planning Commission sometime here in December. And then it was also our strategic planning for 2022, also five-year goals, ten-year goals, and beyond. And the largest topic that we had to address is housing. I don't think that surprises a whole lot of people. But the, the list, housing takes up almost a full page. And I think that we're a little out of touch with where our housing was at to where it's at. We used to say that the average entry-level home is a hundred less than, or equal to, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we did some looking around. Right now, what we would consider, what your average person would consider a starter home, it's going for about three, three-ten, up to three-seventy-nine. You know, one bathroom, three-bedroom, two-car garage, unfinished basement, more than three hundred grand. So our ideas of what entry level was versus what it is were a little skewed. And then just the, you know, our discussion... And then just the, you know, our discussion, what can we do for this community to grow? It wasn't a negative discussion, but I think it was a very real discussion, and when, when other members had talked about, we've been stagnant for too long, that we have been behind, and we've got neighbors who are growing at a faster rate than us, so what can we do to get on track, to get our housing going, to get more people in the school district, more kids that are in school? Our class sizes are smaller than they should be for our general population, the census data that we were given for the last 20 years, our population has stayed pretty much the same, but our school-aged children has gone down. So, we, we need to face that problem head-on, try to figure out what, and I don't want to use the term affordable housing, because I know that scares the taxpayers, and they think that that means that's a negative, I think market rate, I think market value. I mean, when we say market rate, if your average starter home is 379,000 dollars, you know, that's not really affordable.
No, you've already priced yourself out of the market in a lot of places.
So, I think that we took a big hard look at that, and then also the, if we're going to grow, where and how, and if that includes annexation, if that includes growth industrial-wise, but we know that housing is the number, I think we're honest with ourselves when we say housing is our biggest problem.
And we formed a housing committee too, so.
Correct.
Gonna meet every month and keep pushing it, and hopefully, we'll get some shovels digging, digging some dirt for houses in town.
I believe our housing committee consists of council, EDA, EIC, and chamber, or we haven't got, okay, it's not fully formed, but from different organizations in town so that we get different perspective.
Okay. Public Works, Mary Jill?
I guess that's me. Well, most of what we talked about in council business was public works. The only other big thing for me anyway is that the Third Street Bridge is open, being used, it's gonna be ribbon cutting. We missed Biden though, you know, he was just here last week, we should have had it then. I'm sure President Biden was in Minnesota, I'm sure he would have come.
We missed him.
I know, I know, but that's kind of about what we talked about, so. Took care of all of us, thank you.
I will mention, and I think this is hot off the presses, the dedication of the bridge is gonna be next, a week from this Thursday, December 16th, at 2 o'clock, so.
1 o'clock?
1 o'clock?
1 to 2.
1 to 2.
Geez.
That's what mine said.
We haven't cooked.
I don't know where I saw it, I thought it said 2, 1 o'clock. Okay, I missed the update, I guess.
Okay.
December 16th at 1 o'clock, the bridge dedication.
Yes.
Okay, let's go around, anybody, Tyler, anything? Sarah? Neil?
I just got one thing, at your last, at the last council meeting, you had a petition presented to you, and I think some of the facts that were talked about need to be clarified on the farmer's market, I think, what was it, Sue Petron?
Yep.
Was here to talk, and I just wanted to make sure that all the council knows and the public that that farmer's market is open down at, at the parking lot, and
Downtown.
There's, you know, when she was talking, there's only two vendors down there, well, it's open to anybody that wants to come down there. They had a, we had sold, or she sold, issued five, five vendor permits that were, two of them taken two spots, and then she also talked about charging people under 16, the young gal that was down there selling, no, we don't charge, it's right in the application that anybody under 16, we don't charge. So, some of that stuff needs to be clarified, and I've got, and also, she wanted to contact person that is for that market, and in this packet, you can pass it around, I think there's enough there. On the second page of the application, it says the onsite, onsite market manager is Jody Molly, and the phone number is right in there, so I don't know what she was thinking about when there was no contact person, it's all, and then all the rules and regulations are all put in the packet and given to all the vendors. The only thing that we had already addressed in her, in her presentation, the only thing that we hadn't addressed was they were requesting it to be free, and we charge $100, and to me, you know, we've got a lot of administrative work, there's a lot of stuff that goes along with, with issuing permits, and I know John had a, had a, a reason why also, that Mayor Althoff had a reason why that these people should pay a fee. So, I don't know if I would touch that, but other than that, we did have that discussion of what can they sell down there? They didn't want, or you guys did not want a flea market, you wanted a farmer's market.
Right.
So, when Sarah put the, put the ordinance together, we took the definition of a farmer's market and put it right in our ordinance. So, when, when she talks about, wants to sell produce, flowers, and homemade goods, that's all part of the deal. So, we're not, the place is open, you have to just get a permit, children 16 and under are free, and we do have a contact person. Now, we'll probably call her again and see if she wants to be the contact person again, otherwise, we'll find somebody else, but that is all in the application, so.
Yeah, I guess what struck me was, it is downtown, and we can't make people go there and sell things either.
Right.
So, if
There's 18, remember, there's 12, 12 stalls to start, and then the overflow is right behind there for six of them.
Right, yeah, it was kind of confusing to me too, so.
So, I think
Thank you.
On, on the petition, I think everything is, was taken care of already, so I don't know if you have anything that you would want or further, so.
Well, we've got it all down, we'll just bring it up next April or something, so everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Neil? That'll be it. Dan?
Yeah, just a couple things, the, the new water main underneath the bridge is connected and energized, so we're using that now. That raw wastewater pump, we're still waiting on that. It's sitting on the East Coast and they can't find a trucker to bring it here, so we're waiting.
Neil?
Neil!
Bill, anything you want to add, Danae?
I think I've had enough, so nothing, nothing additional, thank you, Mayor.
Laura, anything?
So, I met with Jesse Johnson, the VFW commander, post-commander, and he had expressed some interest from some of the other members, if we would consider, or what the process would be, if there's a option, I guess, to rename the Third Street Bridge to something like the Veterans Wagon Bridge or something.
Oh.
So, I said I would bring it up, I don't know what the process would be for something like that, I'm ignorant to why it was named the Third, you know, Third Street Bridge, maybe it was just because, or there was a reason, right?
It really doesn't have a name, it's just the Third Street Bridge, yeah.
It would be a good time to do it.
Right, I know, and I, you know, obviously, I'm realizing now that the ribbon cutting is the 16th, but, so, I said that I would bring it up, so I don't know what the process would be for that.
There's always a chance for rededication then, you see, always have another party.
When it's not 10 degrees outside?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, Matt?
Just a little question, we've got a, a member of the public who is interested in joining the park board, and I know that January's coming up, and I looked at our charter and how members are brought on and not, so that might be something that we'll have to discuss, there's a member of the public who's interested in joining the park board and the process of how to get in and what that means for current members and stuff like that. And, and one of the points that they wanted to talk about was how we can make Cannon Falls a more bike-friendly community, and if those bike paths or streets would be incorporated into the parks, which I think would probably get a little messy, to be honest. But, anyway, something to think about for the future.
Yeah. Jill?
Yeah, this has been a, probably an ongoing problem for years in town here, is these sandwich boards that get put out all over the place, and Sarah, maybe you can help me with this, I believe, other than putting it right outside your place of business, that's the only place you can put them, but I'm not sure.
I would have to look at the city's sign code, the sidewalks are public property, so unless there's something in the side code that specifically allows them to, to put those out, they shouldn't be out.
Right.
But we could certainly do a review of that and get back to you on what's allowed and what's not.
Right, I personally don't have a problem with them if it's right outside their business during business hours, however, if you drive around town, there are, especially one business person has far too many all over town, and I think we need to get either the police or Public Works to pick those up and bring them in here, and then if they want them back, fine, and if they do it again, have to cite them and find them.
I noticed up on top of the hill on 25 and Main Street, they put signs in that intersection, the county comes and takes them down because they don't want them there, but that's just like.
But it has been an ongoing issue over the years, so we should really clean that up.
Yeah. Okay. Mary Jill?
No.
Steve?
You know, just, thanks for cleaning up some of this stuff, it gets kind of
It helps, stress to know.
Things get carried away, and then, when we can get right down to the paperwork and the facts, it, it sure clears things up for everybody involved, I think. That's, one more thing is, Dan, I saw your boys out there, it looks like they picked up where they left, left off, and seem to be doing a pretty good job, so. That's all I got.
Yeah, I was kind of taken aback by the farmer's market, because we never shut down the downtown, I, I don't know what
Well, yeah, and she said we want it downtown, it is downtown.
It is downtown, yeah.
Where, where, I don't know, must have been some
We'll get it clarified with the Springs.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, just a couple upcoming meetings, we got finance meeting, 5:30 on the 13th, we got planning, 6:30 on the 13th, and Joint Powers, well, Library Board on the 13th also at 6 o'clock, and the Joint Powers Board on the 20, that isn't till January, January 25th, they don't meet, they don't meet in December. Okay, that being said, welcome Diane to the Planning Commission.
Yes, welcome, Diane.
You're gonna be a great addition there, thanks for stepping up there. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Duncan, second by Montgomery, to adjourn, any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We'll take a little five-minute break, and then we'll have, get into the work session.
Diane, I'll ask